Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the New Bedford City Council Chamber. It's a pleasure to have you all here tonight with us. We appreciate your presence. Tonight is Wednesday, May 8th. We're in the council chamber for the budget presentation. I'm joined in the council chamber by my colleagues in government. Councilor-at-large Ian Abreu, Council Ward 2 Maria Giesta, Council Ward 5 Scott Lima, Council Ward 1 Brad Markey, Councilor-at-large Brian Gomes, Council Ward 6 and First Vice President Joseph Lopes, Councilor-at-large Naomi Carney, Councilor-at-large Deborah Coelho, and Council Ward 4 Dana Rhabero. Thank you all for being here. If you'd all please rise. We don't have a member of the clergy with us tonight, so I'd ask you for the next few minutes to please bow your head, keep your own personal intentions in mind, but always keep our first responders and our veterans who serve us at home and abroad in your thoughts We're led in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight by the Councilor-at-large Deborah Coelho. Councilor Coelho?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. And the record will show we're also joined by Council Ward 3 Hugh Dunn. Colleagues, I'm alone in the dais tonight, so you're going to hear my wonderful voice. Ask myself to read item number one into the record. It's a communication, Council President Morad to Clerk Farias requesting that a special city council meeting is called for Wednesday, May 8th, 2019 at 7:00 PM for the submission of the 2020 fiscal year City of New Bedford budget. Motion to receive and place on file will be appropriate.
So moved.
Made by Council Coelho, seconded by Council Lopes. Any discussion on the item before us? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. So colleagues, as you know, it's traditional that members of the body leave the chamber, go to the office of the administration, and escort the mayor to the council chamber. I've selected Council Coelho and Counselor Lima to do that this year. So counselors, I'll ask you to please leave us, go to upstairs, and we'll take a brief recess while they take their little journey and come on back.
Thank you, Madam President.
We are back in session.
Madam President.
Council Lima.
Members of the City Council, guests, I'd like to introduce the Mayor of the City of New Bedford, John Mitchell.
Thank you for the warm welcome, everybody. All right, thank you. Council President Morad, Honorable Members of the City Council, Department Heads, Invited Guests, Residents of New Bedford. I am pleased to stand before you tonight to present a municipal budget for the City of New Bedford for fiscal year, get this, 2020. Yes, 2020. I can't believe I'm saying that. This year's budget builds on the collaborative process between the City Council and my administration that started a number of years ago. Our collective work has been grounded in our recognition that the city must continue to steer itself through rough financial waters, which we're all familiar with, which requires a deliberate approach by both branches of municipal government to develop a budget that is aimed squarely at the city's long-term stability. That's what we're all about, the long term. We in New Bedford have been living through a period of tight finances in part because of past neglect and inadequate planning. There are hundreds of millions of dollars of deferred maintenance and road maintenance, retiree benefit obligations that are unwieldy because they weren't funded adequately at certain times in the past, and that catches up with you, as well as underinvestment in schools and basic services. Like it or not, we have to deal with it, and we've done a pretty good job at it over the last few years. We've really started to catch up. But what makes it harder for us, of course, is that in Massachusetts, cities and towns wield far less control over their finances than their counterparts in many other states. Approximately three-quarters of our general fund budget this year is predetermined by state mandates and regional agreements. When you set aside the public safety department budgets, which are driven by a labor arbitration system that puts municipalities at a severe disadvantage, nearly 30 non-public safety departments split the remaining 13% of the total budget, and we've all become familiar with the pie chart and the very narrow piece of pie right there. It's almost the size of a piece of pie that represents the budget of 30 operating departments. So as we all know, as we examine every year, cuts to those mostly small departments can cripple the delivery of an important government service and still yield very little in the way of savings. Meanwhile, revenue to the city has not kept pace with rising costs. Unrestricted state aid has remained relatively flat over the last several years, really going back over the last decade and a half, and that's all despite the ongoing expansion of our regional economy. Despite the growth that we've seen, it has not translated directly into much in the way of new revenue, new growth from property taxes. So we've made sacrifices, as we must. Over the last few years, certain city departments have been cut to the point where their ability to function is becoming compromised, and taxpayers, of course, have been put upon too along the way. And city government has shrunk, and this is an important point for everybody to remember. Today, there are over 200 fewer positions paid for out of the general fund than there were in the year 2001. So when you hear people assert that city government is just loaded up on employees, you can tell them, well, you know, it's actually quite the opposite. City government has shrunk. In the long run, neither indiscriminate program cuts nor reflexive tax increases will lead to long-term financial stability. We've achieved tremendous efficiencies in the city government, and we should be proud of those achievements, but efficiencies can only take you so far. As you've heard me say before, and I just repeat it because it's a good example, if you want to keep a library in a particular part of the city, there's no getting around the fact that it must be staffed with a librarian. You can't just have a room with books. You can't downsize that position away, of course, and have a functioning library. On the other hand, we can't continue to ask more of taxpayers and expect the city's budget decisions won't materially affect their quality of life or the competitiveness of small businesses. Achieving sustainability by balancing these competing interests requires thoughtful and often difficult decisions, and which all must be explained with candor and clarity to the public, and that's always the tricky part. It's explaining these things because the budget process is sometimes rightly seen by the public as being so opaque, and it's our job to do the best we can to explain it as clearly and as accurately as possible throughout this process. Now, if this presentation so far sounds a lot like what I've said in the past years, there's a good reason for that, and that's because the growth, because of the growth of nondiscretionary spending in particular, it's a fairly static budget. There are no grand expansions or services, no broad initiatives. It's not that you or I don't have new, good ideas that we would like to implement, it's just that the constraints on us don't afford us the ability to try broad new things, at least from a year-to-year basis. Now, for the record, the proposed fiscal 2020 budget totals approximately $401 million, of which the general fund is the single largest component at approximately $356 million. The general fund budget receives a $16 million increase in state funding, which largely consists of additional support for our school district, and that's a moving target now. The Senate came out with their budget yesterday that adds still more to that, and that would be welcome. So this year's budget is marked by considerable restraint in spending, as it has over the last several years. There's virtually no additional spending in those areas of civil, in those areas over which city government exercises full control, and there are a few things that will be added, and I'll go through those in a moment. But again, and this is emphasizing, the problem is that which we cannot control. What's driving spending, indeed, what is crowding out basic services and putting increased pressure on taxpayers are obligations that are dictated largely, if not entirely, by state policy. So again, another familiar chart, and again, I trot this out, this year's version of the chart because it does require our attention. So the main drivers are increases in the school department budget, the net school spending number we, of course, have for some time, budget of the school department at net school spending, and that's determined by a state formula, of course. That's an area that has continued to grow over the years, and it's not to say that there isn't the need there, but that is one particular area that has seen significant growth over time. Charter school assessments, or the net charter school assessments, the assessment plus the reimbursements continue to grow, and that's a big area, as well as employee benefits, and by that I mean in particular healthcare costs and pensions. So with a little more particularity, in the case of pension and pension costs and medical claims, they together will increase about $2.7 million. We meet our ARC, the annual required contribution, every year, and that continues to go up, in particular in the last year or so, as the discount rate has been adjusted, as many cities and pension systems have had to rein in their assumed rates of returns. That means that every year we have to turn over a little bit more to the system, and that's reflected in that increase. And then medical claims also are lumped in with that, and those continue to increase. The medical claims have slowed a little bit, but in the long run, the healthcare costs of the city remain a very volatile source of costs or center of costs. School spending, more particularly our share of school department spending will go up about $1.3 million this year, again, because of, you know, the uncertainty of the state budget, pleasant uncertainty because it's, we're looking at an increase in state education aid this year. That's going to continue to go up, and it's going to fulfill, to address certain important categories of need in the school department, more ELL teachers, a lot of work in facilities which are long overdue, instructional technologies, we need more kids with more computers, after all, if not for no other reason, the MCAS is administered on computers now. And then, of course, there's charter schools, and that's where, you know, the area that probably most vexes us these days, as the council well knows. Our obligation to fund charter schools diverts a growing share of funding away from our public schools, period. The growth in the city's obligation has been exacerbated by the state's failure to fully fund its reimbursement, and hasn't done that for many years now. And so as a result, the obligation has increased to $15.6 million in the coming fiscal year. It continues to grow, and it will grow still as the new Alma-Dema-R school comes online. And I want to just take this moment to thank the council for its recent vote in support of establishing the compromise version of that school. I think it's fair to say that pretty much everybody in this room would prefer not to see any more charter seats imposed upon the city. And whatever your view of charter schools, the fact of it is that we can't afford to support them. It's, in essence, the imposition of a charter school and the resources that it takes away from the district diminishes the district's ability to achieve economies of scale and pay for all the things that we need. We can't afford that erosion in our, the amount of resources that we can deploy to help our kids. But by coming up with a novel alternative, as the council well knows, we were able to make the best of a very difficult situation. It will be imperative that the state legislature approve the home rule petition that this council approved just a couple of weeks ago, as the council is well aware. The State Board of Elementary and Secondary Education approved an alternate charter of some 494 seats that would be filled through an ordinary opt-in lottery as opposed to the neighborhood zone model that the compromise established. If the home rule petition, if that home rule petition is not passed by the legislature, the city will incur an additional approximately $4 million annually upon the full build-out of the school and the exhaustion of the state reimbursements, which will be a significant, which would be a significant imposition on the school district's budget as well as the city's budget. Indeed, as Superintendent Anderson predicted, it would significantly hinder the district's ability to address many of its chronic needs, and it's a number of things that I just mentioned and many more. We're at a point now in our school district where things are starting, really starting to gel, but there is a need for more resources, especially wraparound services for many kids who need them, and the additional cost associated with a larger charter school will really impede our ability to do that for our kids. And this is not to say, by the way, that in the absence of an affirmative vote on the home rule petition, we will be looking at tightening up on the city side for sure and additional levy pressure. We want to avoid all of this, and so I would urge all of the counselors to call your state representative and really urge him or her to, I guess, in our case, all hems, to support the petition because it's good, because the House leadership and the Senate leadership will look to them for guidance on this. I want to know one other thing, as we talk about pressures, I want to talk about one thing that isn't putting a lot of pressure on the budget, just in the way of clarity, and that's the debt service on our annual capital projects. The reason for that is that interest rates remain historically low, and the projects themselves are relatively modest. Some of the projects are very visible to the public, especially the roadwork, and we've been good about establishing a program now for road replacement, and that is a good thing, and we'll see the results of that as time goes on. Others, like the repairing of a roof or the installation of a new HVAC system, won't be noticed by many, but they all need to get done or else they're going to cost us an awful lot more money. And so we've been, when I say this, the collective we, the administration, the council, have been embracing the idea of responsible preventive maintenance that is going to make a difference for the city in the long run. I just really want to, again, thank the council for its far-sightedness on that responsibility. So how do we, so how do we achieve our primary goals, which are to continue to provide first-rate services to our residents, which are meant to enable them to thrive and to pursue opportunity, as well as to restrain the demands placed on the city's taxpayers and to support the city's steady growth by reinvesting in the city itself? I'll say a couple of things. So recent history is a basis for us to draw confidence in the future. Our efforts to craft an effective budget have benefited from a range of initiatives that we've implemented over the last few years, and I've touched upon some of them. These reforms have restrained spending, they've ensured accountability, they've improved transparency throughout city government. The city's performance management and budget transparency initiatives continue to receive national recognition from the Government Finance Officers Association, which awarded New Bedford its distinguished budget presentation award for the third straight year. For those who've, for those of us who've been around for a few years now, we remember a very different-looking budget book. What we have now is something that is, others have recognized as a thorough, crisp document that explains in very lay terms what we're trying to do in the budget and what we're trying to do in the way of services. And I want to thank Ari and Bob and Renee and Carlos and the entire financial team for all their hard work in that way. And by the way, and I'll just add this too, in our latest, and some of you, I know I've seen this in the latest offering statement by S&amp;P, our latest, our rating, double A- minus was affirmed, that's the best rating the city's had, and really since they started tracking them. And the city, except there's one really important thing that's different this time, and that's that we were upgraded on the, on management, where we are now rated very, quote, "very strong" management by S&amp;P, which, again, is not just a tribute to the financial team, not just to the administration, but to the city council as well. Altogether, we've been on the same page. We know that we have to invest in the city, that we know how, we have to lighten the pressure on the levy, and we have to deliver good services, and I think the overall approach in the last, especially the last two or three years, has been really effective, and again, I want to thank you for that. So as we, as we move forward, there are a few prongs to our strategy that I think will continue to set us up well, as we must for the long run. So the first is that our budgets must continue to be restrained, and you've heard that already. For those of you who have been on the council for a while, you remember the days when the administration would load up on spending proposals in the hope that the council would somehow end up in the middle, right? Cut, 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 and then, yeah, there's a sort of a reasonable middle. There's an understandable political pragmatism underlying that approach, but when the budget is as tight as it's been, as we've experienced in the last few years, it's not the right way to go, and I think we've, you know, we've talked through this before. In my view, the public interest dictates that the administration clearly identify new spending and why it's being proposed, and that's been the approach, and I've appreciated the dialogue that we've had along those lines. So this year, a meager amount of new discretionary spending is being proposed, and only on one of three grounds. It will actually save the city money in the long run, that it will lead ultimately to more revenue, or that it is essential to perform a core government function. In the course of the council's budget hearings, you'll have a chance to dig into the details, of course, but I wanted to focus on what the things specifically that we're proposing tonight in the way of additions. The, we're proposing essentially four positions, new positions to the general fund. So the first is a foreman to improve preventive maintenance activities for the city vehicle fleet by implementing a second shift at the central garage. And as Mark Champagne will explain to you, we've been in the midst of a, we are in the midst of a reform of the way that we maintain the city's significant vehicle fleet. I think 300 vehicles or so. Mark will tell you the precise number when he has his at-bat before you. But, you know, we have modernized through the work of a consultant who's funding, you approved a couple of years ago, modernized the way the garage does business with a real focus on preventive maintenance. I mean, every time, you remember, every time we have a big snowstorm and little things break down and pickup trucks, the question often arises, could those things have been prevented along the way? And the answer sometimes is yes, they could have, or when you ask, you know, can we make some of these vehicles last a little bit longer? In some instances, the answer is yes, we could have, and that's exactly why we're going about the work of figuring out how to make preventative, being more effective at maintaining vehicles, as mundane as that is, that will save the city money in the long run, and Mark will go into some detail about how that's happening. Another position is a superintendent in DPI to implement more effective management of the city's cemeteries. So again, this falls into the category of a need that has to be filled to, for us to perform a core government function. We have municipal cemeteries. We owe it to the families of loved ones who are buried in those cemeteries and those who have assigned plots, and frankly, everybody in the city, to make them look nice, to make them well-maintained, and to the extent that any of them have historical features to maintain those as well, and we need somebody on top of it, and Jamie has done a lot of work in figuring out how that can be paid for effectively and efficiently and overseen the right way, and he'll go into it when he's up to the plate as well. Two other positions that fall, again, into the general category of needs that need, that should be addressed just to make sure the wheels of government are turning, and that's an assistant project manager in parks, recreation, and beaches to oversee the implementation of park and CPA projects to keep all that stuff going, as well as a clerk typist to address workload issues in the city clerk's office. You've probably heard from Dennis about that one in the past. Both of these positions, again, are, you know, again, they're administrative positions. There's nothing sexy about them, but they're very, very necessary. In addition, one other item I will note, the proposed budget includes initial funding for something that has been called the Small Business Incentive Program, initiative that was proposed by a number of counselors in the last year, which would create a matching program to support new business capital investments and to support effectively the leasing of mostly street-level business spaces. I think that's something that the council's talked about a lot, and in response to that, we've tried to put together a program with a budget that will, that will start that program, and so more, Ari in particular, will offer more detail on that. The second big prong is, you know, we have to, we have to make sure that we advocate well at the state level, and we can't stand silent, whether it's on issues concerning employee benefits and the policies at the state level that, you know, push that last, that third category of employee benefits higher and higher every year. I was in Boston most of the day today to, as part of a media rollout of a potential lawsuit against the state to change the Chapter 70 funding formula. You know, our school system, again, has real needs. Other urban school districts around the state have real needs. The state has a constitutional obligation to provide a free and adequate education to every child in this state, and that the cities around the state, as all of us well know, have constrained finances, and sometimes, and there is, we've reached a point, I believe, that the state has to step up. The state has stepped up in this initial budget round, but it's going to require not just more initial funding this year, it's going to require a revisiting of the entire formula so that we can have long-term support for our schools. But that's an example of the kind of advocacy that we need to continue to do as a city government. We have to become more efficient also, and that's the third prong. Our efficiency reforms in the last few years have helped to restrain spending, and they've ensured accountability, and they've improved transparency. The list of initiatives is long, and they prominently include the Citywide Performance Measurement Initiative, the city's solar energy program, voice-over-internet service, payroll modernization, and targeted reorganization of city government, and again, I appreciate the city council's support for all of these efforts. I firmly believe that despite all the efficiency measures we've implemented, we have to continue to look really hard, and that's what we've done over the last couple of years. We were really striving to have the most efficiently-run city government in the state, and I think it's not only something to shoot for, for the sake of savings, but it's also something that we want to hold ourselves proudly out as, and I think we're getting there. We brought in, as I've described for you before, a management consultant to analyze our public works agencies, to see what else we can do, and that's been a useful exercise, and you'll hear again from Mark and Jamie on some of the things that have been reformed there to streamline and to reorganize, and I think it's going to work very, very well. And we've also looked at our school department, and their school department is implementing the results of a plan that they undertook, a planning exercise they undertook on facilities maintenance, and that will produce results. So, and again, I mentioned the work in the municipal fleet. All these things are underway. We're always looking, and we're always open for more ideas, regardless of the origin of the idea. We need to figure out how to get better all the time. We strive to do that. Lastly, we need to work together. Lastly, we need to work together on all this stuff, and again, the dialogue between the administration and council has been really good, and we need to redouble our collective commitment to the residents of our city, they deserve it from us, of course. And this process works best when there's a wide-open dialogue, and so, as I have before, I reiterate, that in the coming weeks, let's just make sure that we're talking, let's make sure that we're sitting down and communicating and explaining, and, you know, we may not agree on everything at the end of the day, but I just want to make, I think it's, we are prepared to make sure that you have every bit of information that you need, and we're committed to that. So I want to just conclude by acknowledging that if, you know, you just happen to, you know, stroll into the city, and/or if you, you know, just turned on cable TV and heard my remarks up to this point, you might just think, well, this is a city that's really struggling. And, you know, of course, we know better than that, the city is undergoing a very significant resurgence, and there are approximately 6,000 more residents working today than there were seven years ago, there's been a sharp decline in crime, again, the highest bond rating in the city's history, and a stronger school system, and one that's getting better all the time, the city's physical look has improved markedly, and everybody's noticing it, and I'm highly optimistic, and I know you are, about the city's prospects. And I believe that optimism is well-placed, my concern about the city's finances, and yours as well, are not an expression of pessimism, but are meant to state with clarity what we believe is necessary for us to continue our positive momentum, again, in the long run. The key for us now is to understand that the rebuilding of our city is taking shape. Together, we are making the right moves, but it takes time, it takes discipline, it takes determination, and it takes an open exchange of information. We are clearly on a healthier, more sustainable path that will lead to more effective and responsive city government, and a higher quality of life for our residents. Thank you for your consideration tonight, thank you for welcoming me, and I look forward to our work together in the weeks to come. Thanks a lot.
Ari, can you wait, we'll just read the rest of the items into the record, and then you can pass those out. Thank you, young man. All right, colleagues, so we have several orders to read into the record, we'll read them at one at a time. Item two before you is an order appropriating $330,005.278 from ordinary revenue and municipal receipts of fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020, for the payment of current expenses in various municipal departments. Item is to be referred to the quasi-committee on the whole, made by Council Lopes, second by Council Carney. Any discussion on the item? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Colleagues, item three is before us, it's an order appropriating $1,025,350 in 12 equal monthly increments from airport receipts of fiscal '20 in the airport budget. Item is to be referred to the quasi-committee on the whole, made by Council Lopes, second by Council Carney. Any discussion on the item before us? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item four is before us, appropriating $104,244 in 12 equal monthly increments from municipal receipts of fiscal '20 in the Arts, Cultural, and Tourism Fund. Motion is to refer the item to the quasi-committee on the whole, made by Council Abreu, second by Council Giesta. Any discussion on the item before us? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item five before us is an order appropriating $1,362,558 in 12 equally monthly increments from the Enterprise Fund of receipts for fiscal '20 in the Cable Access Enterprise Fund. Motion before us would be to refer the item to the quasi-committee on the whole, made by Council Giesta, second by Council Markey. Any discussion on the item before us? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Colleagues, item six is before us, it's an order appropriating $40,000, now standing to the credit of the account of the CCDA Traffic Handicap Parking as follows: $35,000 to the Commission for the Citizens of Disabilities Charges and Services, $5,000 to the Commission for Citizens with Disabilities Capital Outlay. Motion is to refer the item to the quasi-committee on the whole, made by Council Lopes.
Second.
Second by Councillor Dunn. All those, any discussion on the item? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item seven is an order appropriating $1,033,588 in 12 equal monthly increments from the Enterprise Fund receipts of fiscal '20 in the Downtown Parking Account. Motion before us is to refer to the quasi-committee on the whole, made by Council Lima, second by Council Carney. Any discussion on the item before us? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Colleagues, item eight is before us, it's an order appropriating $24,176,843 in 12 equal monthly increments from the wastewater receipts of fiscal '20 in the DPI wastewater budget.
Second.
Motion before us is to refer to the committee, the quasi-committee on the whole, made by Council Lopes, second by Council Abreu. Any discussion on the item before us? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item nine is before us, it's an order appropriating $16,807,400 in 12 equal monthly increments from the water receipts of fiscal year '20 in the DPI water budget. Motion before us would be referred to the full, to the committee, quasi-committee on the whole, made by Council Lopes, second by Council Coelho. Any discussion on the item before us? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Before we adjourn, I'd like to thank all the department heads for joining us tonight, know you're welcome anytime, we'll look forward to seeing you over the next month, for sure. Motion before us would be appropriate to adjourn.
So moved.
Made by Council Abreu, second by Council Carney. Any discussion on adjournment? Seeing none, we are adjourned tonight at 7:39 PM. Thank you, everybody.
anywhere, on all of your mobile devices? How you may ask? Just log onto nbcablenetwork.com, and bam, you have all three channels at your fingertips, public, educational, and government access. Here, you can view our program schedules, watch our channel's live broadcasts, or search for a particular program in our vast library of shows. Last year alone, New Bedford Cable Network produced over 500 shows, and nearly all of them are available online at nbcablenetwork.com. Not only can you stay up to date with what's happening in your local government and schools, but also dive into some of New Bedford Cable Network's original, award-winning programs. So check us out at nbcablenetwork.com.
New Bedford Cable Network. Public, educational, and government access. Channel 9 is educational access. Channel 18 is government access. New Bedford Cable Network. We're more than you know us for.